Good afternoon, everybody. The Chair will call the meeting to order. The southeastern part of Vancouver Island, the Gulf Islands, and the Lower Fraser River are their traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. For thousands of years, the Coast Salish people have lived in, traveled, and fished the waterways of the Sailor Sea. The Hulcominum language is the language of this land. Hulcominum traditionally, and to this day, unites the Sanaas, Stenemow, and the Stuminas peoples, and to this day, unites them as one family and on whose territories we stand today. We also give thanks to the ancestors, hereditary leaders, matriarchs, and creatures, big and small, for looking after the rich resources and cultural teachings of this land. Thank you. Moving on to number two, three, and four of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes of the order to the agenda? Please indicate in the chat. And I don't see any, so if we can have an approval of the agenda, that the agenda be approved. Motion to approve by Chantel, seconded by Leanna. Anyone opposed, please indicate in the chat. Don't see anyone, so we'll move on to number six, moving along. Approval of the minutes, that the minutes of Strategic Directions Committee meeting held on January 15th, 2025 be approved. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Of the previous meeting. Moved by Tim and seconded by Chantel. Does anyone oppose to that? I don't see anyone opposing that. Moving on to presentations, I don't think we have any presentations. Is that correct, Karen?
That's correct.
Number eight, Senior Staff Reports. We have Jackie Poole and Carrie Steele and Mark Walsh and Dawn Balcom and school presentation by John Barsby today, so 8.1. Jackie, you are on the stage. Curtains are open. Go ahead, Jackie. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you very much. We have a presentation coming from Justin Green again is to kind of follow up on last month. Last month, he focused on the literacy framework. This evening, he's going to be focusing on the numeracy framework and where we are at with that and what the steps moving forward will look like. So inviting Justin Green, District Vice Principal for Teaching and Learning, to join us with his numeracy presentation. Thanks, Justin.
Can we see that slide? Okay?
We can, thank you.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me once again. I'm Justin Green, the District Vice Principal of Teaching and Learning. Very excited to be sharing an update on our numeracy framework for NLPS. As before, I'd like to start with first acknowledging the people that are doing the heavy lifting in this area of our work. And my slides are not advancing. There we go. Once again, the learning coordinators, along with Diane McGonigal, our District Principal of Teaching and Learning, early years through 12. They all contribute in a significant way to this work. Primarily, it falls upon Tennis Reese, who is our numeracy learning coordinator. And she, what we discovered this year was that she needed a small team of educators to join her in this heavy lifting. And we did a reach out to schools, and we actually have a very nice small team that's been supporting her. We have Maya Ronzlee from Wellington, who teaches math and science. We have Holly Shelton from Randerson Ridge, who teaches K1. And we have Rebecca Thompson from Departure Bay, who teaches grade five, six. So we have a nice range of people that are participating in this work. And I must say, it's actually quite a delight to watch a grade nine math teacher have a deep, meaningful conversation around numeracy with a kindergarten teacher. It's a fabulous thing to see. I highly recommend it. And so what anchors us in this work, of course, are the board goals. And the one that really defines our work is the student success, so increasing numeracy success rates for all students. And that is the driving force behind what we're trying to do with this work. It's also important, I think, to recognize and incorporate in our work an awareness of the Seitzes reconciliation framework. And so we're very mindful of that as we do do the creation of the document and engaging the the community in this work as well. That is always on our mind. The other piece of this too, as well, and you may have heard of this term in your own life, a notion of math trauma. That's not a wellness thing. That is a tragedy in a lot of ways. And so what our work also encompasses is ensuring that teachers, educators, students feel connected to mathematics, to numeracy, and that they feel good about it. They see themselves as mathematicians when they're learning. And so that's also a driving force in this. So what is it? Like last time, with the literacy framework? A learning framework is a structured approach or system that guides the educational process, provides a coherent set of principles, methods, and tools to support teaching and learning. What is it locally? What we're looking to do is to incorporate various pedagogies that focus on the cognitive, social, emotional, and cultural aspects of numeracy instruction. And I will say the one dive into the cultural aspects of numeracy instruction has actually been quite a delight. Trying to see the interconnections between a Western-focused mathematics system and one that is much more local in context. We also want to foster a well-rounded and thoughtful approach to teaching and learning, building upon the fantastic practices that exist out there, but to also look at research and allow that to help refine our processes. And of course, that our framework acknowledges, elevates, and interweaves local indigenous ways of knowing and learning throughout. I did mention this term before, and I love saying it every time I squallow in. That connection of the mind and the heart, the centering, the good feelings. When we think of literacy, when we think of numeracy, it is the connection of those two places, our two spaces, that is essential to the work we do. This takes away the math trauma, we hope. This allows students and teachers to engage in the work in a good way. So what were we up to? We did have a look around. We've noticed a number of districts, Chilliwack, Couchin Valley, a number of others were, had numeracy frameworks out there that we have relied upon to give us guidance. We don't want to reinvent a wheel. But we also dug deep into the research aspect of that. And so we've been looking at an organization called O-GAP, which is the Ongoing Assessment Project. That's out of Pennsylvania. They are doing incredibly good work. And then Pam Harris has actually been a bit of a driving force behind our intentions as well. And she's out of Texas at the moment, but a PhD in mathematics and has a very good view on how mathematics and numeracy instruction should occur. So what are the essential elements of our framework? While we could look at mathematics, and mathematics is a, it refers to the domain of knowledge that we know as mathematics, shape and space, fractions, all of those kinds of pieces. Where numeracy and number sense refers to a person's ability to apply mathematical aspects through thinking and reasoning in a range of contexts. So number sense is the ability to really understand number and use it in over time, more sophisticated ways. And so what you'll see on the slide right now with the number sense there, you'll see this nested model of mathematical thinking of number sense. Where we begin with counting strategies, we evolve into additive thinking. And then from there on into multiplicative thinking. So this nested model of mathematic or numeracy thinking is at the heart of the work that we're doing. We have community engagement. We've been going out to schools. We've been engaging PVPs. PVPs have actually been part of this process as well. We're looking deeply. We need to identify the instructional practices that bring forward this good numeracy work. The Seitzes principles will be a driving force, of course. And then there's the two big heavy lifting parts, which are the learning progressions. What does learning look like for number sense from pre-K through to nine? How does that evolve over time? And then how do we assess that to see how our kids are doing and then make decisions for instruction to support our children in our classrooms? So community engagement. K to nine, primary, intermediate, and secondary. We have engaged with local indigenous elders, and I've been meaning to in the next month or two to engage more deeply in this work. I need to go and connect with Yatustanat down at Lady Smith Secondary. PVPs and classroom teachers, we've just put a call out to a larger group to come together to look at the framework itself and the learning continuums. And of course, that expression of interest just went out. We have a PvP meeting set up for April, where we're going to look at that in more depth. And then learning leaders, we want to tap into the secondary group as well in the coming months. The learning coordinators, the broader team, the pictures you saw at the beginning, they all have their hands in this. From an ELL perspective, early years, French immersion, everybody's getting their fingerprints on this. And this again is the broader group of coordinators that live in Dufferin. And then that small team that works with Tennis directly, supporting her through this work. So small team does the work, larger team does the input and feedback loop process. So small group gets all those things taken care of, presents it to the larger group, larger group gives feedback. So this is a process that's going to be quite a few months in the making. And our plan is by June to have this ready for moving out to the community itself. That is the end of my presentation. Hi, Sepka. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm happy to answer questions as best I can.
Thank you so very much, Justin, for not only your presentation, but your introduction to those that are doing some heavy lifting with you. We have, and thank you, Jackie, for bringing Justin to us. I like Pam Harris. For those who don't know Pam Harris, although she is based in Texas. Fun fact, Pam Harris is actually an undocumented immigrant to the United States of America. She moved to the United States when she was eight years old. Pam struggled in school, not because of her ability, but because of the fact that she was an immigrant. When she moved to Wisconsin, she couldn't enroll in university. So what happened with Pam was she had to do community college, and she got two associate degrees. When she finally married an American, became an American citizen, that's when she was able to go to university. And we're really blessed in this world to have people like Pam that can do podcasts such as Mathematically Uncensored, which is a great podcast if you want to do more math. So thank you, Justin. Do we have any questions for Justin or Jackie? I see that Tim has a comment, and then Greg after that is a question. Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. I appreciate it. Thanks for the plan around numeracy in the framework. You know, it's, it looks like a really good plan. One part I like is the is looking at what's working in the data and that guiding, basically guiding our decision-making moving forward. I think that's pretty good quality right there, I think. Because you kind of have to do that in, in order to move forward in a good way, because you can't just keep making the same mistakes over and over, right? You know what I mean? So but I like the small and then the large. That looks like a good way of doing things as well. So it's more like a comment. So I just want to show a little bit of appreciation for you, Justin, in regards to putting that together for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Chantel, you have a question and a comment, two for one.
Greg is ahead of me.
You are correct, and Tom's ahead of you as well. Greg, go ahead. I apologize, Greg.
Oh, that's okay, Mark. No worries. So thanks for the presentation. I'm interested to learn more, and maybe we have or maybe we haven't got that this far yet in the strategy. But I'm wondering how we'll be putting a Jedi lens on the development of the framework in accordance with our strategic plan and how the framework is going to assist us in lifting up the students who need it most when it comes to numeracy.
Do you want me to give that one a shot, Jackie? I got it. Okay, Jedi is in there, of course. I actually have a page in the draft document that outlines outlines that our priority populations, as we've been directed, but like we should do anyways, are going to be at the forefront of our mind. So as we look at students and their learning and identifying where they're at, hopefully through not only assessing and figuring out where they are, knowing where they need to go, but providing resources and supports to continue that learning progression. It's at the forefront of all of our minds. So yes, I five minutes was really hard to get everything in there. But yes, it does exist.
So can I have a follow-up, Mark? Thank you. So thanks for that, Justin. It makes me wonder perhaps a little bit about when it comes to things that are more academic in nature, numeracy, because we're focused on that this evening. Are we able to focus on sort of the students' achievements versus the bar that, you know, needs to be set perhaps at the provincial level? Because I know that every student is going to be capable of achieving their own best selves. And sometimes when we're measured against others, we're not able to achieve as much as we could have otherwise if we're measured against the progress that we've made against our own self. So I'm just curious as to how we're, how that might factor in.
And so that, that's a fantastic question. We have, the goal of this is to really help teachers, educators identify where their kids are at and have a plan for moving forward. We understand that regardless of them hitting a benchmark for grade five, that their progress may look like they're moving from here to here, but they still haven't met it. So the learning doesn't stop, but we also have this requirement in reporting to make a judgment. We are trying to very much distinguish those two things. That one is about learning and progress and moving forward. And then we have this responsibility at some point to make a judgment about, against what do we expect a grade five to be able to do? We have to make that judgment at some point, but this is the tension. This is a massive tension for all educators to navigate. It's really tough. It's really tough. I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for that question, Greg. Good one. Tom, you have a comment. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, it's turning into a question in front of my eyes there, Chair, so thank you. Justin, it's great to see you, and thank you for this, these two presentations. They're really driving our commitment to our strategic plan objective. You know, your conversation last week, or maybe a couple of weeks ago with us, led me to a Walrus article recently about some of the work being done by the Yukon First Nations School District. And they use the BC curriculum. And they actually have an indigenous-based way of teaching reading that's based more on vocalization and less on text-based. And I get really fascinated by this kind of stuff, and I get really excited that it's coming to our district. I guess it's turning into a question because you mentioned Chilliwack. And I remember in some of our boardly travels over the last year and a half, we met a leader from Chilliwack, I believe, who had developed a early numeracy along the river kind of learning, teaching aid. So I'm just wondering if you've come into that, and basically, I'm, it's not really a question, I'm just really excited about your work, but I'm wondering if you bumped into the early, the river.
I have not with the river. The Yukon one has been on my desk for many weeks, looking at it, and of course, on my desktop as well. It's fabulous work. I'd encourage anyone to go check that out. It's exceptionally well done. We are, our early years learning coordinator is very much about learning outdoors, learning in place. And so what you will, we will all hopefully see at some point is that reflection in the framework as well, that learning doesn't just happen within those four walls, that it is outside, that we can find numeracy all around us, where we can find literacy all around us. So we're hoping to reflect that really well from a local context, like Mount Benson over here in front of you tonight, and Departure Bay, all of these wonderful spaces that we have. Place-based learning is extremely important. It's driving our work as well.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Tom. Chantel, now you get your question and your comment.
Well, Greg sort of stole my thunder here because he asked about Jedi, which was an amazingly well-asked question, and I thank you for your answer, Justin. Yes, there is trauma with math. Actually, I'm just like tickled pink that you've acknowledged that because it's really hard. I've talked to so many of my adult friends, some of whom actually have dyscalculia, which is a learning disability around numbers. And it was just so shameful for them and just so hard that like they never really want to go back kind of thing, right? And that's sad, right? Because numbers are fantastic, and they help us throughout every single day of our lives. Huge, huge thing that we absolutely need in our day-to-day lives. Even when my kid asked me about algebra and stuff, I'm like, you're still going to need to use some of these components, okay? So you still need to learn this stuff. My question is more along the lines of the higher grades and how it's harder to do the outdoor learning and things like that. So there's a bit more constraints when it comes to teaching numeracy in class. And I think about technology and the use of technology. Is there plans? Is there any talk yet? You may not know this yet or either, but using technology and maybe have some examples, I don't know. You don't have to have those answers for me today, but just some things I've been thinking about as they grow older and need sort of access to those kinds of tools.
I would, yes, but the door is open. I think we need to engage the community in that work. What we're finding right now with the math, with the development of the numeracy framework is what we're proposing to do and how we're intending to bring this forward is actually heavier lifting than the literacy framework. Like what we're bringing forward and hoping to engage the community, the capacity building is going to be much more. And so we're being very intentional about how we target that. We don't want to leave secondary behind. We really don't. But we have to be very strategic in how we approach it. It is on our minds, absolutely, without question. We, the task I was given was K to nine. I need to broaden this across, so it will be there. It may be slower in the rollout only because of the sophistication and complexity of what we're trying to do.
Very much so. Thank you. That makes complete sense too, right? You roll it out smaller and then go to the more complex stuff.
We got to do it. We have to do it well. We have to do it well.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone on the team. Thank you.
Chantel, do you have a follow-up? Wonderful. Okay, I see a question for, from Joe.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Justin, you know I'm going to ask this question. What do you anticipate the rollout of this looking like? And will there, of course, be in-service for teachers?
And so that's a fabulous question. And we are in the planning stages. You may have heard of the recent announcement that just came out for literacy. So this kind of supports this type of work that we're planning on doing. I cannot see this being something that we print off and put in teachers' hands without any conversation or any kind of support. That wouldn't be wise, for sure. So I think working with teachers and figuring out how to implement that in a really good way that supports everyone in that work is, it has to happen. It can't, it can't not, yeah. The answer is yes. Yes, you have to. You have to engage teachers, yeah.
Can I just chime in there as well? And I want to just repeat and echo Justin commenting on not only do we need to have an in-service plan, but we actually need to work with teachers to determine what plan works best for them. So actually engaging them, not only in consulting around what the framework and what the continuums look like, but then also engaging with them around how the in-service will look, so it supports our system best.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, not only do students have trauma around math, there are teachers who have that as well. So all the support that can be received, I think, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't see any more questions, Justin. I think you might be off the hook to enjoy the rest of your evening, unless you have any final thoughts or any final words.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just got, thank you very much for coming, and thank you, Jackie, for bringing Justin to us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 8.2 for those following. And it's a school presentation by John Barsby Community School. And Dawn Balcom is going to lead introductions. So you are on the stage, Dawn. Take it away.
Thank you so much through the chair. So I really appreciated the presentation around the numeracy framework and the literacy framework that has come before that. And I know the board strategic plan comes to light through important guiding documents like those frameworks that are there. And we also like to, when we can, have the trustees have an opportunity to see what happens at the school level to kind of bring that strategic plan to life. So some of the systems and structures that are placed at school, some of the intentional strategies to help support our priority populations, and the aspiring work that our school leaders and our teachers are doing to improve the life outcomes of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Up, Principal at John Barsby Community School, to share his school story with you.
Hi, Stephen. Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. I'm just trying to share my PowerPoint here, and it doesn't seem like it's coming up. I don't have any elevator music, I'm afraid, to pass the time.
Dawn, does Stephen have the same ability if he's got? Karen invited him to the meeting.
You know what I can do is I can pop my screen on here, and you can let me know if you can see mine. Are you seeing Stephen's PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Okay, Stephen, can you see my PowerPoint?
I can see yours, Dawn.
I will do my best to advance the slides at the pace that you want me to.
Okay, sounds good. So I squell. John Barsby Community School. Good evening. My name is Stephen Up, and I'm honored to be here tonight on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Stenemow First Nations to speak on behalf of John Barsby Community School about the work our school community has been doing around student success. This is my first year as Principal at John Barsby, and I'm proud of the work our staff and school community have been doing to support and foster student success. Tonight, my presentation will highlight three key areas of action that we are focusing on to meet our student success goal. These include a shift in our learning leader structure, a focus on professional learning, and fostering a sense of belonging, specifically amongst our priority populations within our school community. At Barsby this year, we've created a leadership model and structure for our learning leaders that aligns with our board goals and the district PLC model. Six learning leaders work with administration to hold a portfolio aligned with one of our three district goals, staff and student wellness, truth of reconciliation, and student success. Each team has worked together to create opportunities to create measurable goals, enact and lead change across the goal, and eventually will utilize data to determine if they're working. The purpose of the new learning leader structure is to hand student learning and student success to the The purpose of the new learning leader structure is to enhance student learning and student success through the school improvement process, as well as support the district's strategic vision through shared ownership. A school-wide learning leader model addresses the needs of students, the school, and the greater community to maintain a focus on instructional leadership, professional learning, and best practice. The learning leader roles and associated new structure also aligns with our district's PLC model, citing the need for school-based leadership within a collaborative, professional learning environment. The creation of this learning leader model aligns modern educational best practices, emphasizing collaboration with a student-centered learning environment, ultimately leading to improved outcomes for all members of the school community. One of the goals of our learning leader and administration team has been to provide professional learning opportunities for staff across a variety of different student success-related topics. These opportunities are provided at staff meetings, in department meetings, during PLC, and in small working groups. One of the goals of each learning team is to identify specific strategies that can be used within the school at the classroom level to enhance student success. An example of this includes supporting student transitions from grade seven to eight, from grade nine to 10 within the graduation program, and from grade 12 to life after high school. As a part of this work, we're working on a board-authorized course for careers 12 that allows students to focus on post-secondary or exploratory options to provide students the skills they need to be successful in their personal educational journey, a transition that is unique for every student. We've also spent time learning as a staff about our school community, reviewing student learning surveys to gain a better understanding of student experience within John Barsby, and have worked to create new questions for future surveys to better indicate school needs. Finally, we're working with staff to gain a better understanding of our priority populations. The following inequalities table is presented by the Ministry of Education Analytics Team in a monthly analytics session. As a learning leader team, we discussed this table and had conversation about the various implications of falling into priority populations. Our learning leaders then presented this table to our staff at a staff meeting and then related it to our school-specific data. Twenty-seven percent of our population at John Barsby is indigenous, 2.5 on reserve, 17.4 have a disability or diverse abilities, and 3.4 are in care. They highlighted the impact of vulnerability on student completion for vulnerable students and facilitated a conversation about how we can better support students with these vulnerability factors as simply having them impacts graduation rates. Learning leaders are currently working with small groups on identifying and actioning specific strategies to further student success for priority populations. An example of a specific strategy that we've been actioning this year to impact student success is facilitating a sense of belonging for indigenous students at John Barsby. This year, we have worked to have indigenous learners represented within the school across a variety of contexts. We created a dedicated learning space with indigenous artifacts, looms, weaving and supplies, cultural technologies, and a warm and inviting space to be seen and heard. We created a team teaching atmosphere with our whole community teacher and a school-based teacher to add a layer of support to students, the whole community teacher, and staff. We provide frequent opportunities for staff and students to drum in the foyer throughout the day and for special events. We've worked hard to foster a stronger connection with Sino Nation, connecting with chief, fishing with the Sino Marine Division, and learning about traditional cooking practices. Last semester, we hosted our first-ever La Hall tournament, an opportunity to foster connection amongst school community and to celebrate and honor traditional games. This event was supported by the nation and provided an opportunity to connect with other school communities. We've been fortunate enough to have elders come into our school community to share their gifts and knowledge, something we hope to continue and expand in the coming months and years. We're working on a board-authorized Indigenous Technologies course to honor the work and learning students are already doing. And finally, staff were able to witness and participate in the end-of-semester blanking ceremony, where outgoing staff were honored for their contributions to our stu- school community. Our journey at John Barsby around student success is ongoing and we have some big goals ahead of us. Our next steps include further developing strategies to support priority populations at the classroom level, to collect and utilize provincial, district, and school-based data to inform progress, both in terms of what is working and where there are gaps in service. We want to increase the number of students who are connected to the school by creating a welcoming and supportive learning environment. This means increasing opportunities for connection to culture. Additionally, how can we create similar feelings of belonging for our students and care and our students with diverse abilities? What will it take for all students to feel a sense of belonging at John Barsby? Finally, how can we prioritize the creation of support models to best meet the needs of students with an emphasis on those priority populations? Hi, Sepka, for having me here tonight to discuss a small portion of the John Barsby story of student success, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so very much, colleagues of the committee. Any questions for Stephen? Think you're getting left off the hook, Stephen. Oh, Leanna has a question. There you go. You don't get away that easy.
Sorry. Hi, Stephen. That was amazing. I feel incredibly inspired. Um, I didn't quite catch, because I was also, um, crunching at the exact same time, so I missed two words about the indigenous technology course.
Yeah, so within our cur- sorry. Within our current, within our current whole community class, we have, uh, we're teaching whole community, but then at the same time, we're doing a variety of uh, cultural practices, so weaving, um, drum building, uh, and so a variety of different activities that are happening, but students are not necessarily getting, uh, credits and and we want to make sure that we honor those students for the work that they're actually doing in the class as well. And so trying to, um, create, uh, an additional bar course that that helps honor the work that the students are doing in there and and the teachings that are happening by, um, CMU Tastinot in there, so.
That's amazing. Wow. Okay. Thank you very much. So much good news that you just shared with us. Thank you.
Hi, Chair.
Thanks, Leanna, for the question. Um, final, final call. Uh, trustee Chantel says this is fantastic work. I'm gonna put a final call out and then I'm gonna allow you to enjoy the rest of your evening, Stephen.
Hi, Sepka.
There we go. Hi, Hacha. Thank you so much, Don, for bringing Steve to, uh, to our meeting tonight and it was worthwhile. We learned a lot. Thank you, Don.
Awesome. I will thank Stephen and I apologize for the technology. I started sharing my screen and when I put the PowerPoint into presentation mode, it popped on one of my other screens and I didn't want to derail Stephen and have him start over by having me swap screens that I was sharing. So, uh, thank you for that and thank you to Stephen and the entire team at Barsby for the work they're doing.
Thanks, Don. No, in the end, it worked out. Uh, that's what teamwork's all about. So there we go.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks. We're gonna move on to item eight point three on the agenda, which is our Director of Instruction for Learning and Inclusion. Um, Carrie Steele is gonna talk about building education assistance through mentorship, the BEAM program. Comfortable, because this is a really interesting topic for myself. I can't speak for others, but go ahead, Carrie. Thank you for coming this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm super, super excited to be bringing this this evening, actually. We, um, we know that we've struggled with recruitment of EAs for some time and that it's been difficult to fulfill all of the positions in the system that we've been hoping to have people in. Um, and we also know that we have some EAs, uh, who are really, really skilled and dedicated people in our system. And so I think this does two things, right? It's going to allow us to bring some, um, fresh, uh, colleagues into our system, but also to allow the people that are here to really help them understand and learn the ways of of being in our system and the supports that we have in place for our kids. So, um, BEAM really is a partnership between, uh, coordinating group and some instruction and then our, our EA mentors that we're hoping to have come alongside. We started by, uh, reaching out to a number of other school districts. We, uh, had a former principal, um, do a little short contract for us. She reached out to a variety of districts in the region, uh, but actually she ended up expanding that. So we started looking around the island. We talked to some districts in the lower mainland and also a couple in northern B.C. Really got a sense of their in-house programs, what had worked, what were some of the barriers that they encountered, what were some of the solutions they found for some of those barriers? Um, and so we really feel that this program that we've developed reflects all of that. Um, one of the things we definitely learned is that, um, you know, if people are transitioning into this kind of a program from other employment, they may need to maintain that employment for a period of time while they're getting their training. So we've tried to be really super flexible. Um, so, uh, I'll talk a little more about the nuts and bolts of the structure in a minute, but I'll just give you kind of a, an overview of this, uh, content of it first. So we will have our current inclusion outreach program, um, the staff within that program will be coordinating this largely, but it, it won't be just them providing the instruction. We feel it's really important to have a variety of voices, uh, represented at that table. Really important to have, uh, the expertise that we have in our system, um, leverage to provide this training. So we have an inclusion support worker who will be, um, the coordinator instructor with the program. It's gonna run Tuesday evenings in May and June, and then we'll expand a little bit beyond that. Um, but part of the coordinator's role will be to bring in, uh, inclusion support teachers, principals, speech and language pathologists, school psychologists. Um, you know, we have lots of, of members in our community that we liaise with all the time, partner groups and things, and we really want to make sure the candidates in this program get a very well-rounded experience as part of it. Um, the syllabus for the program, I know there were some bullets in the, uh, agenda package that went out. Um, one of the things that's really important to us is that it's tailored for our local community. So uh, we definitely are covering some of the regular bases around, you know, uh, interpersonal communication skills, understanding and supporting students on IEPs, responding to challenging behaviors, those kinds of pieces. Um, it's also the nonviolent crisis intervention training that we do locally. Not only is it important for everybody to have that training, but we also, the foundation of so much of our supportive planning is done with an NCI lens that we're gonna make sure that that's a really important thread that runs through this training as well. Um, and then another piece is, you know, just looking at our strategic plan and the importance of focusing on our kids in our priority populations through a Jedi lens, understanding, um, you know, indigenous ways of knowing and being and providing culturally sensitive support. Um, having an awareness of the lived experience of people in our community with diverse needs and disabilities, and we really want to make sure that all of those voices and elements are included in this training so that the candidates that come forward really have a sense, not just of like, what's my job day-to-day, my nuts and bolts work in the school, but also where do I fit in the bigger picture of NLPS and this beautiful work that we're growing together with our new, our new strategic plan? Um, so I did mention that it would be running one evening a week in May and June. Um, we had contemplated a weekend structure or having a little bit more in-person stuff during the school year. The feedback that we got from our neighboring districts is that, um, a lot of folks who will come to this will have their own children or other bits of employment they're, they're engaged with. So we've avoided weekends on purpose. That hasn't worked well in other jurisdictions. Um, but we really feel some additional training is needed beyond what we can offer one evening a week. So over the summer, candidates will have some self-directed work that, um, you know, based on who comes to us and what their experience is, we will tailor it for this group so that it's meaningful and hopefully something they'll find engaging over the summer. But there will be some self-paced stuff to do over the summer. Candidates who are successful in completing, uh, the in-class pieces and the summer pieces will be interviewed at the end of the summer, and if they are successful in that first piece of the program, then they'll be able to continue in the second part, which looks like an internship in our schools, uh, as well as some more classroom, uh, instruction. The EA mentors that we are talking about will be people who are currently working in the system. We'll provide some coaching this spring so they know exactly what's expected of them. And then when we get to the fall, uh, we're flipping our traditional practicum model a little bit. Instead of having, uh, a practicum where the EAs who are typically with the kids would keep doing their job and a practicum student would come in and mentor, or sorry, and observe and, you know, kind of collect some observations, ask some questions, practice a few things. Uh, we really are intentionally reframing this as an internship. So it's really important to us that the candidates get as much firsthand experience as possible. So when they move into the schools, they're not doing observations that will be built into the springtime. Come fall, when they're doing their internship, they are frontline with the kids. They are providing that service and intervention for the students. And their EA mentor will be the coach right alongside. So there'll never be a moment where somebody without, uh, a fully credential is, um, or with the experience that they need will be, you know, completely independently responsible for a really highly complex child's program. But they are going to be hands-on with it, with a really intentional bit of coaching along the side, so we can really get as much impact as possible with that. Um, the, there is some flexibility. So if people are needing to do kind of part-time internship while they do other work, we plan on leaving the window open until Christmas time. Um, but if people are really intent on making this transition into this work and they really want to go deep, um, we have a potential for them to be all finished by our October staffing day, which means that when we're filling those fall positions, we are ready to go with our first graduating class. Um, it is a bit of a pilot in that it's our first time through. We're making the best decisions we can with the info we have. We're gonna try to be really responsive to the group of people who are part of the cohort as we, uh, come forward. Um, but we, you know, of course, we'll spend some time, uh, throughout kind of reflecting on things and when we finish up next fall, um, we'll make some decisions about, you know, going forward and what that can look like. We anticipate we'll learn quite a bit through this first pass, but, uh, there's lots and lots of enthusiasm about it and I, I'm actually super excited. By the end of this week or early next week, our expressions of interest will be out and will be often running, um, with registration closing mid-April and a beginning of May start. So yeah, so that's kind of BEAM, BEAM in a nutshell.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Um, I'm excited. Um, and I think Naomi Bailey is also excited. She has a comment.
Now, how did you know that? Carrie, uh, yeah, super excited. Uh, so many little aspects of it I really appreciate is like, you know, how, um, the opportunities they have to be able to pay back, you know, for the coursework. Um, the, the mentorship is just a really important piece, I think, and I, I love that, that you're bringing in, you know, EAs with the experience with, you know, on the ground level to, to work with them and all the different team members that you, you're bringing into place. And the fact that you've looked at other places, uh, you know, how they're doing it and, um, I know you said you're excited. I'm really excited too, and I'm hoping this will help us, you know, be able to, um, get more people interested i- in this position. So I know you've put a lot of work into this and I really appreciate it. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Naomi. I have a question coming from Chantel.
Great. Thank you. Um, ever since this kind of got put on the plate, uh, I've been very excited about it because as we know, it's training is expensive. Um, there's not a lot of flexibility. Um, you know, the mentorship part, like all the things that, that are kind of missing sort of thing and, and a lot of other areas, um, you've thought of and you've sort of incorporated that into the planning and I really, really appreciate that. Um, to me, this is something new and, and such great potential to, to be the leaders, in my opinion, um, in the province. Um, I always say that. That's because I think we should be. Um, and I think we are. Um, so my question actually is around the, uh, you, you mentioned community members. Um, you're gonna have people coming in and talking. Would you be able to expand a little bit more on, I mean, you might not have this yet either, um, in, in detail or anything, but um, the community members that you're thinking of, and I do appreciate you talking about the lived experience, uh, aspect of of folks with disabilities too. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, um, just speaking to that piece first, I think we have some really good learning that we're doing through the work with the Accessibility Committee and just the the networks that we're building in our community and really understanding the importance of having, um, voice and at the table and, and, um, live, you know, people's lived experience, it's different than, um, just kind of being proximal to it, thinking that you understand for sure. Um, I, I think the time is going to be quite limited in the trainings. I mean, we have, you know, two and a half hours a week. So it's, it's not like being at school full-time, so we're gonna have to really maximize those opportunities. I would think that at the beginning, we're gonna focus on, um, just having the candidates situate themselves in our community a little bit. So like, we know who the specialists are, for example, on our school-based teams and who those itinerant specialists are, who the school-based specialists are. Um, helping new EAs understand their role and where they fit in that bigger picture and how their contributions are different from somebody else's on the team. Um, I, like, we're gonna have to spend some time doing that and just providing some context so that they're really ready to go for their fall practicums. So I, I see the, uh, inclusion support team providing some of the direct instruction around some of the kind of foundational content. I think, um, you know, there's lots of partnerships with speech paths, psychs, inclusion support teachers, uh, classroom teachers. I think so, those voices are gonna be really important. I see as we're moving into the fall and we're talking about, um, different types of needs that we're supporting. What are some of the diverse abilities and disabilities that our kids are experiencing? Um, I think that's a place where some people who have lived experience with some of those needs and, um, family members, there's probably, that's where that will come in. I think it's a little bit too early this spring. Um, in terms of other community partners, uh, you know, we have lots of, uh, partnerships with, um, Child Development Center, for example, um, not just the OTs and PTs who are an extension of our school. Child Development Center, for example, not just the OTs and PTs who are an extension of our school teams, but you know, the navigator supports. Groups, we have advocacy groups that we hear from. We have people work with behavior interventionists. And so just understanding like all of the acronyms and the lingo that are coming their way and how the supports on a child's extended care team, like where does that fit at school? I mean, we do our own planning at school, but we try to do it with as much meaningful consultation and collaboration as we can and have those authentic relationships with the broader team. So just where do you fit as a new EA in that? And, and what are you going to notice about other people on the child's team and how all those pieces fit together? So yeah, I don't know if that quite got at what you were wondering, but.
It did, it did. It kind of gave me more of a visual timeline in my mind, like kind of how that works. And I really appreciate that. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you, Chantel, for your question. One of our stakeholders, Jeff, has a comment.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, QP is very interested in seeing how this is going to roll out. Anytime we do something like this, there will be concerns, and I'm sure you might hear some, that we water down the qualifications of a position in our discussions with, with Carrie and staff. Though they pledged that, no, that that is not the intent and that is not actually going to happen. So if you just, you'll probably hear that concern. It's a natural concern for people to have because of course qualifications, then it's attached to wage and everything else. But staff has pledged that that's not the case, so we're, we're definitely happy about that. And but we also want to say that we don't see this as a replacement to increasing EA hours as a recruitment and retention tool. But we see it more as working in conjunction with it. To, if you take Beam and you add increased hours, hopefully it's going to bring meaningful change in having more qualified EAs working a job that has a livable wage. So yeah, we're definitely interested to see how this is going to play out. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on, we have a new person, Tom, trustee Tom with a question.
Am I new? That's great. Thank you. I feel kind of old these days. First of all, I just wanted to appreciate QP's cooperation with this. And Jeff, it's good to hear that we're going to be working on this together. Yeah, I'm really excited about this opportunity. In the last couple of months, last month, I've been out to a couple of local organizations that are recruiting very heavily. The Nanaimo Corrections Facility where we went to have our tour was very keen to be able to get qualified young graduates in their, in their workplace. And we saw the same thing out at Cedar Secondary when the ministry came by with their Road Builders Road Show. And Dave Travers and his work with the CTC program was highlighted as just how in-demand our students are. So I guess my, it comes around to my question is, do you see Beam being able to work with our own graduates? Do you see Beam as removing barriers to people who come out of grade 12? Because I'll be honest, Carrie, I saw some amazing peer tutors in my time who just had the perfect aptitude for kids. And, you know, and, and I know a couple of them that are working in gas stations and that it just doesn't sit right with me. So, you know, I'm, I'm wondering what you think the potential is there to work with our successful peer tutors and, and bridge them into an education, a career in education that doesn't necessarily require post-secondary?
Yeah, I, I mean, I certainly, I agree with you. I've seen some just remarkable student leaders in our, in our high schools over the years. And so are we specifically recruiting grade 12s separately from, no. But certainly we're not going to turn away students that are going to be graduates that may be interested. I think we, we are wanting to capture people who really have a desire to work in schools, have a high degree of commitment to, you know, supporting kids with the various things that they need help with at school. I do know that having seen some of our younger, brand-new EAs come into schools, like the elementary schools, that often works really well. High school, that can be really tough, actually, if the kids think that you're a fellow classmate. It's, it leads to a different relationship and connection and ability to implement strategies and things. So we will consider every applicant. We do ask that people have a little bit of background working with, with school-aged kids, particularly school-aged kids with diverse needs and disabilities. But we definitely have some teens out there that have volunteered at Camp Sunshine that have been part of different activities and things in the community. So yeah, we're definitely going to consider any application from somebody who feels like they're really committed and ready to go for sure.
Best of luck, Carrie. It sounds great.
Thank you.
Thanks, trustee Tom. Do you have a follow-up at all?
Nope, just my best wishes.
Wonderful. Does anyone have any more questions before we go round two? Trustee Chantel, you have another question.
I do. And it's a technical question. Because I'd like to understand further the, the cost, because I'd like to advertise this as well. Talk to people that I know. It's like, hey, by the way. But I'd like to have a little bit more information to, to give to folks. So if I understand this right, the tuition is $3,075. Registration is ongoing till the 15th. And the only, you only record the $750 to start. And when do you need the rest of the funds?
Yeah, so we're asking for $750 at the time of registration. And really, we just, you know, a lot of work will go into preparing the class sessions and, and making sure there's a quality program offered. So we want people to have to make enough of a commitment that we know they're serious about it, but not enough of a commitment that that's a barrier out of the gate for folks that, you know, trying to save money between now and the first of May might be really tricky for some people, right? So we want to be as low barrier as possible. So the idea would be $750 upfront. Come September, we'll be looking for the other $3,000. However, there are three different ways for that. It either could be just paying the rest of it. It could be, one of the things that will happen is if you're successful through the spring and summer with your training, you'll be onboarded as an RA. That's our way of kind of getting you into the system as an intern. So once you're onboarded as an RA, we now have a way to either take installments off of paychecks and just kind of do it over time until it's paid off. Or people can arrange to do it installments if they'd prefer not to have a payroll deduction. But our, our plan would be when you register in April, we figure out what the rest of that's going to look like with you. And it's definitely an individual thing. We don't need every candidate to kind of go in the same direction, so.
I love that. That is absolutely fantastic. And that's equity right there.
Well, I think it'll make a big difference for lots of people, right? And, and we know that there's some really great people out there. We don't want our registration process to be a barrier. And that's actually another piece that I'm really excited about. I've been working with communications in our HR department. And, you know, usually if you're applying as an employee to the school district, you have to go through Make-A-Future and upload a resume and all of that kind of stuff. You can apply for this by sending an email to the link on the advertising that our communications department's going to be putting out. And, you know, like if you send us a resume and cover letter, that's great. If you build it into the body of an email, we're pretty good with that too. Because we want to, we, we want to hear from people, right? So I, I see Jillian's put some pieces in the, in the chat. I don't know if we want her to pop on and talk about the communication plan, but there's some beautiful, a website being developed and some stuff going out to media. And like, so I'm super excited about it all, actually.
That's really awesome. That is really great to hear. Thank you. Thank you for that. And yeah, Jillian wants to expand on it, but it's going to be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chantel, for the question. Our executive director for communication, Gillian Robinson, says we will be doing full communications advertising on the Beam program so that people are well-aware. Thank you, Gillian, for letting us be aware of that. Joe, you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Chair. I just wondered if there would be any scholarship spaces available for students interested in the program.
Yeah, that might be something, thank you, that we build in down the road. We did talk about it related to this cohort. We tried to keep the cost down as much as possible. And we, we actually have contributed some of our surplus monies this year towards the cost of it so we could keep tuition down as low as we could. So we just didn't have space in the budget at this time. But, you know, it's a pilot year, right? So we're going to hopefully learn some lessons and continue the conversation moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a very good question, Joe. Do we have any other questions or comments on this topic before we move on to the next item on the agenda? I just want to write down scholarships because I have a question about that in the future.
Make one last comment, sorry?
Absolutely.
I just, I just want to acknowledge what a really amazing collaboration this has been. I mean, we've, you know, I've been working really closely with Kendall and HR and with Jillian and Communications. And I've been running all over the floor, talking to everybody at Learning Services back and forth. And I just, you know, we reached out to QP, we had lots of support and good conversation there. I think it's, this is an example of a bunch of us coming together. And I think it's, it's why there's so much excitement because I think we've tried really hard to look at the need across the system and bring the team together in a really collaborative way. So I just want to express appreciation for the people I've been working on it with.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much, Carrie. I do have a question. I don't know if you know the answer to this or not. It's regarding the crisis intervention training. With regards to that, is there a component within that training that goes into the science of brain health and how neurodivergency can work in different disabilities?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it's so specific that it goes into the different disabilities, but it does talk about neurodivergence. It does talk about just meeting people where they were, that where they're at. It talks about, you know, techniques that are related to being really proactive and relationally-based and giving people the time and space they need to process. It's a super proactive framework as opposed to, you know, NCI training years ago, like we used to all call it the restraint training. That, that's what it looked like 25 years ago. Now, the training has a little piece about physical redirection when that's required, but most of it is about what is your way of interacting with people in a really relational and warm and supportive way? What are the strategies that you can do to make sure that people are, you know, given flexibility and choice and space and, you know, developmentally appropriate options before you get to the point where there's an escalation? So it's why it's the foundation of our supportive planning because it's super proactive and honoring of an individual's experience. So yeah, I'm, that's a really exciting foundation for a bunch of this work, actually.
Wonderful. Thanks. Thanks, Carrie. Trustee Leanna says, this is very exciting. Thanks so much, Carrie, for sharing this great news and program with us. Well, thank you, Leanna, for that comment. So very on point. Ringing the bell. Anyone else? Carrie, I, if you're not doing any more presentations this evening, I wish you a, we all wish you a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Tanya says, thank you, Carrie. Hey, moving on to, and trustee Tanya also says, this looks like a great opportunity for us. Indeed, indeed it does. Moving on to item 8.4 of our agenda, we have both our secretary treasurer, Mark Walsh, and our assistant superintendent, Jackie Pullen, to bring us up to speed where we're at with the childcare update. And we have three motions on that coming up. So Mark, I don't know if you or Jackie are going to lead first, but both of you have, have the floor.
Great. Well, thank you, Chair. And, you know, Jackie is here. And, and before I start any of it, I just want to recognize the work of Diane McGonigal on all of the items that you're seeing before you today. We're quite excited about what we're bringing forward to you. And I'm going to say, I'm, I'm actually a little bit surprised at how successful. I'm obviously very confident in what we can do, but I think that the demand for our services as well as the services we're providing and the cost recovery model are actually working as well, or frankly, even better than we expected. So with that, I will get into, there's three different items for the board's consideration this evening. Perhaps I could strategically do them separately, although they're all related to an overall child, childcare strategy. The first item is related to capital plan submission, which won't be coming for some time now. But it'll be part of the, the major capital plan submission of the board if it approves it. And that's to apply for funding to build a childcare center at the Dufferin Learning Center. So probably somewhere on that large adjacent field. So if you're looking at Dufferin from the street, to the right of the, of the facility is a large field. It does belong to us. If the school is ever needed for an elementary school purpose in the future, there's plenty of space in the rear and to the left of the facility that we could still manage it, even if we take some of that field away. And what the idea here is, is we've had, we have a great working relationship with VHA. And one of the things that they're certainly looking for is it's additional support in any way that they can, particularly with childcare, to attract employees themselves. And so what we want to do is apply for a center, probably of about 100 spaces, details to be finalized upon approval, that we would build. It would be, again, go to one of our qualified external providers. There would be no before and afters care at this site. It would be purely zero to five. We do not have the legislative authority to run those programs, even if we wanted to. And what it would do, of course, would be serve mainly the folks at the hospital. But of course, people that work at Dufferin that are employees as well would have an opportunity to access. So great opportunities. We'd probably reach out to VIU, see if there's training that can be incorporated in, in the facility as well. Likely, the facility might be a little bit bigger than what we're typically used to. So it might not be a build by us. But again, we haven't determined that as of yet. But before we take those next steps, we need the board's approval that it will be on their capital plan. So the recommended motion there. Happy to answer any questions on the, on the first aspect, Chair. I don't know if you want to pause, answer questions, address the motion and then move to the next item, if that makes some sense.
It sounded to me, Mark, as though you wanted to do them, Suri Adams, so we can do that. Let's take a pause if anyone has any questions on the first item. Then we can entertain a motion. And I just asked my colleagues if you're planning on wanting to read out the motion to have it in front of you, please? Question from trustee Chantel.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Through you, Mark, to the other Mark. I'm wondering, you, you said that you're looking at about a, this is just, you know, in, in approximate and, and stuff like that, understanding that that's not set in stone or anything. Would you be able to kind of clarify or explain how, why such a larger facility? You said that it would, if, if we did go with that, it would be like a larger facility. It would not be created in-house. Is it because of the demand I see here that a lot of the, a lot of the spaces would be probably taken from the hospital? Which is totally makes sense. Is there anything more to that, though?
Sure. And perhaps if Jackie wants to jump on, she's been part of the discussion as well.
I'm, I'm happy to jump in if you, if you'd like, Mark. In conversations that we've been having with Island Health and with VHA, it has been around the demand, being able to even attract some physicians to our community, to be able to attract some specialists to our community. It boils down to whether or not they can have childcare. And so the demand is quite significant. And we know that, you know, having that infant toddler and is, is a huge component. So zero to five is a very large demand. And that area has such, it's not just the hospital, there's a ton of medical in that whole block. And that's just a continuing to expand as well. And so we would just be, you know, meeting a need that's there.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you for looking into the future and making sure that it's as big as, as it should be. If that's the direction we go into. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chantel. Trustee Chantel. Thank you, Jackie and Mark. If there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion at this time, which is the first one on item 8.4 on the agenda. Thank you, Chantel. Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. The Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Nanaimo Lady Smith Empowers, have to apply for childcare spaces funding to create a childcare facility at Dufferin Learning Center.
Do we have a second here? Seconded by trustee Tom. Do we have any discussion on that item? Going once, going twice? Call the motion. All those in, all those opposed to the motion, please indicate it in the chat. Otherwise, I'm going to call it passed unanimously. Passed unanimously. Okay. The second, second motion, do you want to speak on that, Mark?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. So our childcare policy requires that the board approves any expansion of sites of before and after school provision that is provided by the school district. And so you'll recall, and I believe we've added a previous memo in there, that the idea, of course, is that you'll recall, and I believe we've added a previous memo in there, that the idea, of course, is that we advertise and then we, our own staff, typically EAs and a few RAs, will provide after-school care to uh, to our own students, before and after, depending on the site. And so in this case, we've got it at Hammond Bay, we've got it in Pleasant Valley, we've got it at Gabriola. We know that Gabriola doesn't provide before care anymore, just because the demand wasn't there, but the after-school demand is quite strong. Uh, and we've got it at Fairview. So what we're looking at doing, and the board's already approved Rutherford, what we're looking at doing is expanding additional spaces in the North End. And I know this doesn't feel as geographically dispersed, uh, perhaps as we would normally like, but we have an opportunity here, given that we're likely creating some spaces at our schools due to the opening of Rutherford. So we we don't want to sacrifice space that we have, um, of of course, for for K to twelve needs. But here's an opportunity uh, to expand in the North End where there's tons of uh, demand. In addition, having the North End as well means that we're going to have additional bodies that are able to move from maybe their homeschool to another location after school in a in a quick and seamless way to provide that service to kids. Couple of things to note, uh, generally, you'll see we've now have EA staff getting between thirty-four and a half and forty hours a week. And so, you know, we've heard from our partners, we've heard from some of our staff, and and interest in additional hours. Uh, this is a huge driver of that. Uh, and so there's, I know, uh, the uh, staff did questionnaire to the system, you know, who's interested in more hours. Certainly wasn't unanimous. So at some point, if we expand to all of our elementary sites, I will expect that we're going to have some pushback from folks that may be not interested in the before and after service. However, at this point, um, it's doing, you know, real quality service for our families and our kids as well as it is giving those hours. And we've heard from our partners that that is a priority for them to have additional hours. So that's that's big. Again, we're not asking for specific sites at this point. We do, we're seeking some flexibility. The reason being is because we don't quite know how many kids. We have a good sense of how many kids are going to be leaving McGur and leaving Randerson as an example. But the reality too is, is that Randerson, for instance, may well lose kids, but because of class size and composition requirements, we may well not actually gain as much space as we were hoping. So there there could be, you know, too limited space to be able to offer that service. So we do need some flexibility, but we want that okay to do at least two spaces. The school we know that will have space, of course, uh, is Frank Nay. Um, we're, but we're hoping McGur and and Randerson will to be able to support the this program. So Jackie, I'm not sure if you want to add anything else. I'm sure there's questions. Um, just again, a huge success. You recall, we got a grant from the ministry uh, with that idea of can we provide the service on a cost recovery basis? We've had a manager, we have a coordinator, we're going to expand to another assistant manager, and then probably coordinator after that. Uh, we have used almost none of our, a very limited amount of our grant, and a lot of that's due to startup costs. And subsidizing the Gabriola before school uh, program as an example, that we knew just didn't have the demand uh, for long-term use. So uh, really great success. I think the board can be proud and uh, probably showing that this is uh, doable uh, on an expanded basis, and you'll continue to see us coming back to seek more approvals as long as it's working. So again, maybe turn it to Jackie to highlight what I've missed.
No, I think you got it all there, Mark. So we're good. Thank you.
Happy to answer questions.
Excellent. Um, do we have any questions for Mark at all on this? Because if we don't, I see trustee Naomi. Oh, wait. Two questions and one comment. Well, well, Jeff, uh, we'll let you get a question if no one else uh, types up, then you can keep cycling back. So go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, no, for sure. I just didn't see anybody else there yet. So, um, one of the questions I had was the in the report, it talks about the issues of um, or replacements continues to be an issue. Um, can you expand on that, Mark? Because uh, from what I understood, we had a pretty robust on-call list. We have the kind of half-hour circle. Um, I was just wondering if.
I can, I can speak to if you'd like, Mark.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I think the challenge is just working through the technical aspects of the call-out system. So just the way that, and so continuing to work with um, achieve of whether or not there's a way for it to be more automated. So it's not about necessarily always getting someone. It's figuring it out within the system so that it's not a manual person having to do that. Um, because the hours are sometimes different and components like that. So it's, it's sometimes it's the technical parts are the challenges as well.
And and to add to that, Chair, if I may, is also that when we do replace someone, we make sure that it's getting funded from the right envelope. So if you're an EA K to twelve for the first five hours of the day, and then you're doing the other job for two and a half, are we making sure that the right op, the right pot of dollars is funding that replacement? So that that's what we mean by issues, Jeff. So more the, not the ability to get bodies in, just how technically we're doing it.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you. Do you have any, do you have any weight? Do you have any weight, Chair?
No, no, I don't see anyone else in line up, so you get to ride again. Um, so go, go ahead and ask your question and finish up with a comment, I guess.
I think, Mark, you briefly touched on it in that same paragraph. Running into a conflict with employees who do not wish to have the additional hours. I agree that there is not a hundred percent of EA's want full-time hours, but I guess I don't understand that comment because we fill these jobs with twenty-year employees, like the the desire is there, so I just don't, I don't know if you can expand on that. I don't know where that comment would come in.
Sure. So through you, Chair. So in our initial, and I think we reported back when Hammond Bay happened, I know that a few people weren't necessarily interested in what I'm, what I'm talking about is if we get to the place where we have twenty-five, twenty-six sites with forty kids a site, as an example, that's going to be essentially our entire EA uh, group as well as others. And so there's, that that's what I mean, is the 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 more we grow, the more people we we need, the the less choice there's going to be if you are not interested in extra hours. So it's working fine now, but that we will get to that, that place where I'm not hoping that we see QP come and say, we need less hours for our EA's. But we, we might get there someday if if this program continues to be successful.
Okay, thanks. So I'll be retired before that happens, so it won't be my problem. Um, just a quick comment, Chair? Yeah.
Sorry, I was on mute. Absolutely.
I don't want to go too long on it. You guys know, I was super excited when we did one school, so you know my excitement of 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 this. Uh, I think it's awesome. So great work by everyone, everyone involved.
Thanks, Jeff, and I don't see any more questions or comments. So I think that we can look at uh, the motion, the second motion, and trustee Naomi uh, has volunteered to uh, to read that out for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Um, the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, approve up to two additional elementary school sites in the North End to host district-operated before-and-after-school care in September two thousand twenty-five.
And Leanne is seconding that motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All those opposed to the motion, please indicate in the chat with whatever indication you would like, as long as it's appropriate. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Naomi, for reading that, and Leanne for seconding it. Third and final topic on eight point four, Mark.
Sure. Jack, Jackie, do you want me to start? Do you want to start? I just, I I know how, what an important hand you and and Diane have had in in driving this.
I'm, I can jump in if you'd like, Mark. That's fine. True. Um, and I'd like to acknowledge Diane, but also Catherine Keenan, who's our childcare manager, who has also played um, such an integral role. And so what we're looking at and what the motion is is proposing is a pilot cost recovery um, based programming for over the summer. So at a couple of sites, it would be full days, so it would be, you know, it's not childcare, but it will be summer day, um, summer programming for students. It would be child uh, school age that would be at it. And we're looking at, hopefully, two sites. We would need to kind of work through what the staffing would look like and and how we would, you know, advertise for the staffing through QP and and have staff come in for that component. Um, but looking at a pilot cost recovery, we know that childcare over the summer is a huge demand for families. Um, especially childcare that would be able to start at seven-thirty in the morning and go till, you know, five. So, you know, many of the summer programs are more of a nine to four type of hours. This would be a full day. Um, so it would be programming for that. I'm looking at two sites.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions for Jackie at all? Don't see any questions. I do, I do see a question. I see a quest doing from Chantel. Go ahead.
Sorry, it takes a little bit for my computer to run right now. Um, everyone's on the internet here. Um, my question is about the two sites that you're uh, thinking about doing. Um, which schools would those be? Particularly?
Um, still in conversation, back and forth. Um, we're probably going to look at sites where we currently have before-and-after-school care, just because we're already familiar with those sites. We have, you know, the childcare manager and coordinators are already familiar with them. So I don't, I don't want to commit to anything, but I know that the conversation has been around um, Pleasant Valley and Fairview, but we would be needing to like, take a look at what is the demand. Um, where is the need and go from there. But we're looking at wanting to have it in a couple of different spaces, for sure.
I can see a lot of demand for this in the summertime. Um, it's it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. And I wasn't, I know that you were typing fast and trying to get in before I started calling the questioner, going for the motion, so I apologize for that. Tanya, you have a comment?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, I just think this is fantastic. Uh, one of the things I've always said, one of the reasons I've always valued things like community schools is because of the importance of having summer programming. And I know this isn't specifically connected to community schools, but it's the, that concept of finding a way to ke, to allow families to keep a relationship with school, with 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 even just being on 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 a school site and having summer programming on at our schools, it it helps. It it does a lot for for us. Uh, so this is, this is fantastic.
Agreed. Thank you so much, Tanya, for that. Um, Jeff, you have a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I I'll give it really quick. Obviously, uh, QP supports us uh, one thousand percent. Um, and I just really, I'd be remiss to say um, as somebody who is very important to this district, uh, Rob Zabir, um, first really opened my eyes to this about ten to twelve years ago, about opening our brain into not thinking of the school district as a nine-month organization, but more of a twelve-month organization. Not just for our employees, of course, that was our interest, but for our community. So I know you'd be smiling right now that uh, this is actually hitting the table. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff, for sharing that, and I couldn't agree more. Um, if we don't have any further questions, uh, we have a motion. Oh, we do have a comment from Leanna saying, this is awesome for all, all the good community vibes. Wahoo. You're gonna make me read out wahoo, aren't you? Okay. Um, we're going to ask if there's any more questions, and we have uh, Leanne um, volunteering to uh, read the motion and and make the motion. So uh, do you want to go ahead, Leanne?
Yep. Uh, the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, approve a pilot cost recovery-based programming at appropriate sites determined by staff for summer two thousand twenty-five.
Wonderful. And Tanya would like to second the motion, and I recognize her as a seconder. Do we have any discussion on the motion on the floor? Well, I'm just gonna say I am tickled pink. I think this is fantastic. I think this brings a sense of uh, integration further into our community. I can't see a loser at all in this. The community needs it. Our schools need it. Um, as a single parent myself, I can attest that childcare is extremely difficult to come by. So this is, this is wonderful. I'm gonna call the motion unless anybody else has anything to say. If anyone is in disagreement of the motion, please indicate it at your peril at the bottom of the chat. I see it unanimously approved. Wonderful. And I just want to say thank you to our stakeholders that have uh, given us input, both Joe and Jeff. Um, it's, this is what the committee is all about, and we, as trustees, need that feedback so we can make the best decisions possible going forward. So thank you, both of you. Um, do do do, I think we're on item eight point five, and Jackie, thank you so much. I think I don't see you anywhere else, so I guess you're probably gonna enjoy the rest of your evening. Um, Mark Walsh, again, I think this is this is your uh, this is your night, Mark. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And just before we leave the last item, I'll just remind, the last motion was in support of summer programming, not childcare. So oh, very technical detail, but an important one associated with our legislative compliance requirements. So.
Right. But I can say as a parent, sometimes we kind of use it as, you know.
You, what what you, what your your child is being cared for in the day and the programming that they're in. Yes.
Yeah, fair, fair comment. Go ahead, Mark. Continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so just before I start, um, I just wanted, there's been been a couple of feedbacks since the this agenda came out. And I'm actually gonna preface um, the the comments, and I hope the policy committee will forgive me, but um, perhaps um, based off of, I think, some of the feedback we'll hear tonight, it may be best not to actually recommend the motion tonight. It might be best to have this topic introduced, comments provided, and then some further written comments provided, perhaps to the policy committee to review and bring back prior to it going out to the community. So I'm just gonna pre- preface with that, and then I'll, then I'll walk, I'll walk through uh, the the proposed changes. So as background, the the Parent-Student Appeal Bylaw is a legislative requirement uh, in the School Act. And essentially what it does is it provides an avenue for parent, parent, typically parents, it could be a student on on their own behalf, to appeal a decision or a lack of decision uh, by district staff, the district generally, uh, that has a significant impact on the health, education um, of the, of a, of a student. So it can't be a decision about a parent. It has to be a decision about a student. And so we, as a district, we've had a number of of these happen, and of course, we're not going to give any of the details in public meaning because they're all private and individualized. But what we have found is every time we have, when we learn a little bit about the process, what we can fix, um, how we can make it more transparent for families, uh, et cetera. Now, our bylaw largely didn't necessarily, could it could kind of stand on its own accord, but I think it's important that it's, it sets out some of these these clarity pieces for parents, as well as clarity pieces for boards and trustees that are asked to make these significant decisions. On the other side of the coin, there's an administrative procedure that's in the hand of the superintendent. We're reviewing that as we speak as well. An example, I would say, is that currently our AP is called Complaints and Appeals. There's nothing about a complaint in the School Act. So there's no right to complain to the board through a, a, you know, a fairly judicious process about a complaint. It's about an appeal. And so we want to separate those concepts uh, out of the AP. So just as a heads up, that's one thing that would be coming. So again, important to note that only the board really is in the position to make a determination if they're going to hear an appeal. So on occasion, uh, an issue as an example is quite apparently not subject to appeal. So um, I didn't like the way that my students' class uh, went to something or other. And then that event is gone. Well, the appeal is, it's it's not really necessarily appealable, so it's not necessarily the board is going to to hear that. The alternative is um, you know, a decision about the way that we fund a school in a broad terms. Well, that's not necessarily about a student, so there wouldn't be an appealable decision in that circumstance. But in the past, staff have kind of taken the step just to say, sorry, no. But what we're doing is even where we know it's a no, or we think it's a no, we'll still bring it to the board to make a determination. And that's be very clear in in the But what we're doing is even where we know it's a no, or we think it's a no, we'll still bring it to the board to make a determination. And that's be very clear in, in the bylaw. So the draft contains. What is appealable and some examples. Um, so there isn't confusion about, about that. So there are some aspects that just are deemed not, um, significant decisions. Uh, and then there's some decisions or issues that are deemed significant. So that's one thing to, to note. We've got some definitions to try to, um, provide some clarity to what we're talking about. Um, and in particular with respect to procedural issues. So one of the biggies, uh, and is the, the, what we call the standard of review. And I, I know it's kind of a. Fairly legal idea, but really the School Act is giving the board the ability to make a fairly significant kind of quasi-judicial decision about overturning or not. A decision of staff. And so what the board is, there's no guidance as to what that decision looks like. And what I mean by that is, is the board being asked to make kind of a decision in the place of staff? So must it be correct? Must it be the opinion of the individual trustee, how they vote? Or is the board being asked whether it's reasonable, uh, in a range of reasonable outcomes in the circumstances? And what we've suggested is if, if correctness, that idea that it's as, has to absolutely be the right decision. Um, even if it's still reasonable, has to be absolutely correct in the way the individual trustee would have chosen. The amount of time, effort, materials that an individual trustee would be have to. Be put in front of them would take days, would take thousands of hours and pages of time and effort, et cetera. And that's not the intention. The intention is to have parents be given and, and students to be given an avenue to get in front of the board to appeal a decision. But again, that's subject to reasonableness. So, okay, we don't quite like the way the IEP is, is written. But in the end, it's a reasonable educational strategy in the circumstance. So yes, the parents disagree with it, but staff is reasonable. We're not going to overturn rather than. No, I would have done it the way the parents wanted in the circumstance. So that's outlined for clarity for parents, but also clarity for the trustees. Trustees could go with correctness, but then again, we would have to hire three of me and three superintendents and. You know, there'd be so many people having to put in additional work for, for these that that's why that, that standard is, is being recommended. Also outlines the expectations of what you could expect at a hearing. And so you, it's an intimidating process. Here's a formalized process in the School Act. We're coming before the board. What does that look like? And so at the board, at these proceedings, the chair reads what that looks like. But rather than having someone be surprised, the idea is, is that that process is also now laid out in the bylaw as drafted. So those are some of the big changes. Um, but I do again know that. Uh, there's some, some, and thank you for some concerns coming forward about maybe what we didn't think about. And so hoping kind of for initial commentary this evening, maybe some feedback in writing from trustees and our, our stakeholders. Um, that can go to the policy committee to then incorporate or make any changes that we think are required to come back to maybe a board meeting in a month. Then the recommended motion would, would come forward if that process makes sense to everybody. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, and particularly hear those comments about the types of things that we, we might have missed in our first glance.
Thank you, Mark. Um, Mark's available for any questions on this topic. It sounds like, um. There might be a little bit of more, uh, lifting before we, we bring a motion to the board. So. Um, we can ask, you know, within the next month or so, if we have questions to staff or that, or we can ask it here if it's on our mind now. But there's nothing stopping people from making the motion if they want either. So.
Well, and perhaps Chair, I can just add like, so one of the issues that was raised was there's no specific reference to kind of cultural, culturally safe practices in, in this, you know. Very judicious, uh, you know, traditional process. And so that's a, I think a reason, a really good comment. That we should probably incorporate that. Um, and then. So rather than go to the public without that in there, we already know that that's a change that's, that should be in there. So before we go, that's, that would be incorporated.
Sure. Thanks, Mark. So at this time, staff probably doesn't recommend to, uh. To go forward. So that's, um, you know, Mark's available for any questions. Um, I see that, uh, Chantel does have some things. But would love to hear from stakeholders and other trustees as well. So. Chantel, you can go ahead. It doesn't look like there's a big lineup.
Okay, well, maybe I'll, you know, hopefully folks will come forward. Um, it is a very, um. Important, uh, bylaw, and there's a lot in it. Uh, there's a lot to flesh out, um, and things. And I. I really do thank the policy committee for, uh, working on this. Um, because it's not easy. It is, uh, part of legislation, but also part of our job as trustee, um. In making something that supports families, um, in their, their, in a way for them to, to bring an appeal forward. Um, so there's, there's a few components in there that, um, is really, really important. Um. One thing that, uh, kind of stood out for me was, um. That, that there's a lot of legal terms in there and, and they're, they're necessary to a certain degree, right? Um, but it's, it's, uh, maybe perhaps looking at creating more plain language, um, within the document so that it doesn't become so intimidating. And people will understand it better because we really don't want to have folks, um, misinterpreting, um, any part of it. And that includes, uh, any new trustees. Um, any new staff or whatever that, you know, isn't privy to our conversations right now, um, and gets these great explanations. Um. So having more of a plain language, I think, um, could be helpful. Um. Or having like, uh, definitions of these words, uh, like for example, appellant, um, is a word that, uh, most folks, um, don't interact with very often. Um, that's, that's one. And, and the cultural safety part as well is, is something that kind of stood out. That I would really like to see kind of embedded in that. And I don't know how to embed that in that, but, um, I think it, it's a relevant piece of. Of, um, our interactions, um, with families, um, and staff as well. And, um, so those are, those are my ideas, uh, my thoughts on that. And I will go to the next person. And if I have any more thoughts, I will let you know. Because I see that Joe has something as well.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chantel. Joe has a suggestion would be. A process flowchart and a plain language form for folks and a brief summary of what to expect at a board hearing. So there, there's that suggestion we could take away as well. So, thank you, Joe. Um. Anybody else? Chantel, did you have more? Oh, Leanne has a comment. Go ahead, Leanne.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to kind of ask Mark a clarifying question because the way I understood what he was saying is that. He's suggesting that as a group, um, of trustees, but also with our stakeholders that are present. To take this, uh, take this away and then basically reach out. To him with suggestions, and then this will come back again in a month. Is that what you were saying, Mark?
Through, through you, Chair. So yeah, the idea would be is that like, we'll take any comments this evening that have been put forward and, and again, appreciate the, the ones that have been raised in the chat as well as. Um, on screen. Uh, and then what I would do is I would compile them for the next policy committee to be able to review. Incorporate as appropriate and then bring back to the next or the one after that, depending on what our next policy committee is.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was just looking for clarification on that because. For me to like, um, test all these things out in, you know, in the midst of this meeting quickly seems very.
Oh.
Challenging, right? So I just wanted to make sure that was the comment you were requiring. Thank you.
Yes, please, please email, the email to me and then it'll get shared with the entire policy committee at the next policy committee meeting where this will be on that agenda.
Excellent. Thank you, Leanne, for bringing that up. And thank you, Mark. Um, Greg has a comment.
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess I just want to acknowledge the work of the, of staff and assisting policy committee with, uh. Putting this draft together. Um, and I actually agree more with the, um. With the motion that's included, recommended motion that's included in our agenda because that gives us the opportunity to. Do the formal consultation process and receive feedback. I mean, this is how we're supposed to. Create policy in accordance with our own policy, um, on creating policies. So, uh, if I may, Chair, I'd just like to read the motion.
You bet. You can go ahead.
Thank you. That the Strategic, Strategic Directions Committee recommend that the Board of Education of School District. Number sixty-eight, and I'm a. Oh boy, I lost my spot. Sorry. Yeah, okay. Pass the first two readings. Changes, uh, to the Parent-Student Appeals Bylaw Number Two, and then circulate as a notice of motion for thirty days. Utilizing the consultation process as per board governance, section one, two point seven, policy development. If I get a second or I'll, I'll explain it.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Seconded by Leanne. Go ahead, Greg, if you want to motivate your motion.
Yeah, thanks. And my apologies for losing my spot. My, my mouse wasn't scrolling properly. Um, okay, so, uh, the policy committee has already dedicated a substantial amount of time working to get us to where we are today with the draft. And the motion before us, uh, is to initiate the process and to proceed to public consultation. So this will be the opportunity for our stakeholders and trustees to provide input. To the policy committee for consideration and then bring it back to the board, uh, at a later date. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Would anyone else like to, um, discuss the motion? I see that, uh, Tanya has a comment.
I'm actually going to speak against this motion. And while I respect, uh, Greg's experience this mat, in this issue, in. The consultation process and so on and so forth. And I normally would agree with him. In this case, my concern is. It sounds like we've got a fair bit of feedback here that already, that's going to require us to do a bit, some work to integrate a lot of stuff. And I don't want to be in a position where we send this out for consultation. With it not in its best form and then get a whole bunch of feedback that will require us to make so many changes that we end up sending it out for consultation a second time. I want to be able to send it out for consultation once and be sure that, uh, be more confident. That the changes or comments that we get will only require tweaks rather than major work to. To, on, on the policy. I want to make sure we, we're confident that we've hit all the points. And I'm not sure, based on the feedback I've heard that we have.
Thank you, Tanya. Chantel, you have a comment?
Um, actually, it's exactly what Tanya said, so, um.
Before, before we come to your, before we come to your comment, um, Greg has a process question. Would this be a, uh? Turn into where we're going forward, or is this on the topic?
I, I just wanted to confirm with, with staff, uh, how proceeding. Uh, if the motion was to get approved or get support. How we would be able to receive input and amend the policy to try to alleviate some of the concerns that have been raised so far.
Okay, sure. Staff, could he?
Sure. So it would be a similar process in the sense that if we, so if the board passed the motion ultimately. We would then put the, the draft out, uh, with those two readings for thirty-day consultation. It would come back. Typically, we would have it come to the policy committee to be able to review and make any amendments. Uh, as needed. And then either if they're minor in nature or feels like it, it's reflective of, um. You know, what, what we've heard and everyone's comfortable, the third reading could, could happen with amendments. Or alternatively, we would make the amendments. If they're significant enough, the board would probably contemplate. An additional period of consultation prior to the third reading.
Thanks, Mark. Greg, does that help you out?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, uh, circling back to, uh, do I have anybody that has not spoken? No. Chantel, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I wanted to echo what Tanya said. Um, I am concerned that if there is substantive changes, um. In regards to the bylaw, um, because it's a bylaw, um, it would have to go back out again for, um, consultation. And, um. I do wonder if that's a great thing, um, for folks, uh, for the public to have to go do that again. Um, but I also understand Greg's concern regarding, um, getting the feedback. Um, from us right now to go back again to the policy committee and then, you know, um, it's a delay and, uh. It's not exactly, um, the process that usually happens for regular, uh, policies. So, um, I do appreciate that as well, but, um, I'll be speaking against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. Do we have any more, uh, speakers on this motion before I call the question? Okay, I'm, I'm just going to have my thirty-second two bits, or I guess not two bits anymore, it's two nickels. Um, I'm gonna speak in, against the motion. Um, I, I think that, uh, though I appreciate, uh. Um, Greg's, uh, what Greg brought up, uh, at the end of the day, I have to sort of agree with Mark that maybe there is a little bit more fine-tuning that, that we could. That we could do at the policy level. So I'm not inclined to rush into things. And if we can do a little bit more looking above and beyond the thirty days, I'm inclined to support that. So for that reason, I'm gonna be. Not supporting the motion. So. And then comment from Tim, I agree with fine tuning. Okay, so if anyone else has any comments, and then I will call the question. And Naomi says she will be supporting the motion. Okay, so we're gonna call the, call the motion. All those. Opposed to the motion, please indicate in the chat. I'm gonna give it a few more seconds. I recognize trustees Bailey, trustees Keller, trustees Pellegrin, and trustee Lee as supporting the motion and. Trustee Brezovic, trustee Morve, trustee Harris, trustee Roca, and trustee Robinson oppose. So the motion, uh, does not carry. Okay, thank, thank you, Greg, for, for making the motion. And, uh. We will move on to the next order of business on item, unless anyone else wants to carry on an eight point five. Anyone has any business on eight point five? We can move on to eight point six. Okay, so we'll move on to item eight point six. Mark, you've got a lot of work tonight, my friend. So let's, let's keep going. Eight point six, it's, uh. Oh, and you've got backup in the form of, uh, Tony Sutton. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I know the, the, the real, the real knowledge is the backup in this particular case. So I do want to recognize Tanya. Uh, and her amazing work, uh, who, you know, did most of this work and really appreciate, uh. This district is really blessed to have someone that is so detail-oriented, protecting our financial interests, um, at all times. So just want to express that. So. Tonight, we have our amended annual budget. So this is a legislative requirement that the board has to pass, and we need to give it to the ministry. So there's two motions. Of course, one is that the, we need to. When the gets to the board, there needs to be unanimous motion to read a, to read a bylaw three times in a single night. And then there's the bylaw reading themselves. And that's what the two motions are. And so what we have is the amended annual budget. And so go back in time to spring. And we came to the board and we said, we think we're gonna have this many kids. And we think that this is gonna be the needs in our schools. And we created a preliminary budget. We think that this is the amount of funding that we're gonna get. And then from there, the preliminary budget gets passed and we start our operations. From the very get-go, we know that the preliminary budget is not going to look like the, the amended annual, um, typically. And so an example will be, we get more kids flowing into a school, we apply, we put more teachers into those schools. We might need more classroom enhancement fund teachers. The board might support, um, additional, like out of the surplus dollars to allocate. to allocate those dollars to a different area. We may get less interest revenue or more interest revenue. And so all of these things are, are moving until the amended annual gets passed. And that's kind of the basis for, for the next, the next steps. I think it's really important, again, to remember, in this document, you're going to see the surplus dollars that the board invested with the superintendent's direction into those priority areas are one-time funding in nature. And so what happens is you're about to see this really impressive increase in full-time equivalent staff from our preliminary budget to now. But when we do our preliminary budget for next year, you're going to see a corresponding decrease because we don't necessarily have those funds, or we budget a little bit conservatively from the perspective of our enrollment, et cetera. So just a, a couple of, of things to note. So outline of all of these changes is there for the board to see, and happy to answer any questions. I intend to hit a couple of highlights. So a couple of highlights that I think that are important to note is, one, we, from our preliminary to our current, we missed our FTE, like our headcount or FTE in schools by seventeen. We still went up significantly last year, but we went up just a little bit less than we thought. However, a couple of dynamics occurred. One was our designations went up significantly, and so that drove additional dollars. Most of those dollars, of course, went to support those students. But they do generally go into the operating fund. Something also to note, an interesting trend that we've got our eyes on is we've seen a decline in students identifying as indigenous in our district. Now, it doesn't have a major financial impact right now, but if the trend continues, then there will be a direct impact on the dollars to support those initiatives. And so something to watch out for, something we're trying to figure out why, because we've not seen a decline in enrollment particularly. But we are seeing a decline in kids that are getting funding through, through that particular envelope. So, so something to watch. Importantly, I think this year, we, we always have to make estimates on a variety of things. So if we're a school district and we say we're going to get too many kids, and we based our budget off of kids that don't show up, we have significant cuts theoretically to make. That is not our situation, thankfully. But one area that we are often very conservative on, but it's a little bit of a dice roll, is our average teacher salary. And so our average teacher salary, we didn't, we don't find out that number typically until December, and this year was, was January with the ministry's funding. And what I mean by that is we're a district that, say you had ten teachers and their average experience was eight years. That means that they're all making over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Your average teacher salary is, you know, is going to be well over that number. Then what happens is the ministry goes, okay, well, as a province, because Nanaimo has, you know, more experienced, you know, teachers than school district number, you know, fill in the blank. We are going to give Nanaimo a little bit more money to make up for the difference between the provincial average teacher salary and Nanaimo's average teacher salary. The dynamic that we saw this year, however, was the provincial average has caught up to ours somewhat. And so what that means is we get less money for that differential, and so we missed that by about a half a million. And that's, you know, being on either side of that is not too untypical. And so thankfully for us, though, the international program beat its numbers in the amended budget, and that largely funded that discrepancy. So those, those are relatively, you know, normal numbers, but something to always realize. And when the boards, you know, when with the board hears, oh, well, you know, finance staff is being too conservative in their estimates or in their enrollments or what have you, that is the reason, because the amount of sleepless nights that we have about average teacher salary and enrollment is, is, it's not really right. So, but it's, it's quite important for us to be aware of that. So the other thing, though, that I want, I really want to, to point out, and Karen, if you could bring up page twenty-seven of the agenda for me, I'd appreciate it. Is probably the most significant financial issue that we've faced as a district is our, you'll see, this is a historic replacement cost summary. So again, I'm not suggesting that people are not entitled to their sick leave, and you'll, there's been some changes statutorily that have impacted this, you know, with, with TTOCs and, and, you know, replacement KPI staff entitled to the five days under the ESA per year, a sick leave. But this increase, even accounting for that, as well as accounting for increased salaries, I don't know how you could describe it as not a crisis. So you'll just see amended annual, we, we thought we were being conservative in picking the six and a half million dollar number for our estimate, and we're already up to seven point six five. So something that I think that we just need to be aware of, and we'll be regularly reporting on it, because we're laser-focused on, you know, what are the things that we can do, and certainly, you know, the board is focused on employee health and wellness, and our superintendent as one of the, the main focuses of our superintendent, and so hopefully, that's going to have a positive impact. Then the other piece, and so on page twenty-eight, Karen, you can go off sharing now. You don't need to share anymore. The other piece, you'll see all the additional revenues and additional expenses on page twenty-eight, if you want to ask any questions about them. But what I will point out on page thirty-one, you will see from our, you know, annual budget to what we're, our amended budget, twelve, thirteen additional teachers, twenty-eight additional EAs, some additional admin associated with childcare and international. So, but, you know, significant increases in FTE from the preliminary to the amended, and that is quite normal. And so when you see a decrease, or if you see a decrease in our preliminary for next year of FTE from the amended, you'll know that with increased enrollment, with increased need, was, is going to drive more numbers. So overall, we are where we should be with a couple of those misses that, and, and, and changes that, that we are focused on. But I'm happy to answer any questions, but ultimately, the recommended motions are there. And perhaps just before I turn it to questions, I can ask if Ms. Sutton would like to add anything to what I've said.
Thank you, Secretary Chancellor Walsh to the Chair. I do not have anything to add. I think that you hit all the high points. I'm just happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Tanya, in supporting Mark and bringing this to the board. We can have some questions now, if anyone on the committee, and that includes stakeholders, have any questions. And then we can, we have two motions after that, so I see Leanne has a question.
Hi, yeah, it's just in regards to those replacement cost numbers. I'd say alarming is the word I would use. And it's interesting, so from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, that's a one point seven million dollar increase. And we're already over that number in twenty-three, twenty-four, currently this year. So are we forecasting that we're going to be over that again by around the same amount of one point seven million dollars? And if so, are, I'm assuming we're tracking with other districts, like, is this just now common practice that everyone's seeing? Or are we really an isolated incident?
Sure. So through, through Chair, a couple of things to, to note, and I'll, I'll let Tonya respond on the, if we're tracking a little higher or not. But it is what we can see a provincial issue, so absenteeism particularly with the ESA changes. But then the cultural change during COVID as well is can be partially the explanation. The other thing I will say about our district, I would suspect we are probably one of the best districts in the province for our ability to replace teachers. So we don't really have a lot of failure to fails on the teacher's side. I know it's a different story on the, on the EA side, but it's certainly on the teachers. And so, you know, if, I'm not wanting failure to fails, but you know, if in previous years there were examples, that can be a little bit of it, just not having the people, whereas we do a pretty good job with that in, in the last couple of years. But Tonya, I don't know if you had any further on that.
I would just add that the budget has been increased to the seven point six million for the amended to account for the significant shift that, of course, we didn't see the year-end financials until after the original budget was, was created. So we are putting more resources to what we feel is going to be a more reasonable year-end expense than the original six point five. I don't anticipate us coming in with the actual expense over the revised budget of seven point six. I feel like the revised budget of seven point six is going to be sufficient. What I will also add is that in twenty-three, twenty-four, we did have a fairly significant anomaly in one month, and it was in November. And I don't necessarily feel that that is through all the historic analysis and trends and so forth. It seemed to be a one-off. There could be a variety of reasons for it. We're still trying to dig down, but at the end of the day, it's, it's likely that that is, we're not going to see quite the same number. But again, the seven point five is a comfortable revised budget for us at this time.
Okay, thanks so much. No follow-up.
Thank you, Leanne. Comment from Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think I, I was able to get out to my schools on Monday, and some of the, a little bit of discussion was around which was not a lot of, not a ton, but a little bit around burnout and different things like that. So I was asking like questions around staff morale and all these kind of different things. So the, you know, appreciating staff and all these things, there's just simple things that go real long ways actually with staff, you know. So around the wellness, because that has, you know, there's direct correlation with what we're doing around wellness and how we're approaching it. And there is also comments about the, the two new wellness programs that we're planning on starting. I think it was brought up at that. I'm wondering, I guess how we might measure those. I guess that's probably a comment for another, like maybe a question for a future meeting when we're talking about the wellness stuff, because I know it was brought to us a couple of weeks, or a couple of meetings ago, or maybe last meeting. But just hand in hand around the idea around trying to see what we can do with that seven point six and it continuing to trend upwards, right? So at some point, we got to do something about it and keep gauging what we're doing as a district to support our teachers and staff and that type of thing. So just a, just a comment. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, and, and through Chair, perhaps I can respond. And, and so, you know, when we reallocated some of that surplus, some of the surplus, and, and I know it's difficult to, to, to correlate necessarily, is but some of those staff, you know, morale issues that were raised, I know that the superintendent was eyeing that very seriously in some of the decisions, of course, with a focus on students at the end of the day. So now we're only looking at, what, three months of those additional investments being in there. And, you know, I know the superintendent is, is committed to trying to support some of those on, on a more ongoing basis. So hopefully, they'll pay off, and we'll see those in, in, in the numbers at the end of the day.
Thanks, Mark. Does anyone else have a question before I circle back to Leanne? Go ahead, Leanne.
Thank you, Mark. I just want to go back to what you were first saying, Mark, around that we're seeing a downward trend in students identifying as indigenous on the registration. And to me, like, that's a standout for me, because I felt like we were getting to a place where students were feeling comfortable and their families were feeling comfortable with checking that box because of the work that we've been doing in our district to ensure that we are doing right by indigenous students. So I guess maybe it could just be more of a, a comment around, I hope there's some dig into that, like drill down to see why that is, if it's maybe just they're missing it, you know, or if, you know, we actually have an issue where students aren't feeling comfortable as identifying themselves.
Sure. And so what I can say is that, you know, we, I know this is on, on Robin's radar to, to have the appropriate staff to dig, to dig into that exact issue, which is now we've noted it, it's been seen in the budget. Now it's something we are, we are digging into, and so I don't have the answers exactly what, but it, it, I wouldn't have, the board, I expect, will be asking us the question again, particularly if, if the trend continues. But I know that that is something that Robin is looking into.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Leanne. If there aren't any more questions, Tanya has volunteered to move the first motion that we see. Go ahead, Tanya.
Thank you.
And before you begin, I just want to remind the committee that this motion does not have to be unanimous tonight. So, go ahead.
Thank you. I thought it did. Okay. Thank you. The Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District number sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, give the school district number sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five amended annual budget, bylaw, all three readings at one meeting on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second or? I see a second from Leanne came up first. Tanya, would you like to motivate that motion?
Yes, just to say that staff has, 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 as always, done excellent work in both putting this document together and in explaining it to us. I think that it is incumbent upon us to just take the next step. We are required by law to, by, by the government School Act to pass this, and I believe there's a deadline, so I think it's important that we get this done.
Thank you, Tanya. Any other discussion before I call? Call the motion. Call the question. Mark, could, could, as a parliamentarian, could you confirm that this does not have to be unanimous tonight? And that would have to be at the regular board meeting? That would have to be unanimous?
Yes, it's just a recommendation to pass the bylaw, not the passage of the bylaw, so not unanimity is not required this evening.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I muted myself. There's no more questions or discussion. I'm going to call the question. If there's anyone opposed to passing this, then please indicate in the chat. I'm going to give it a moment, because a couple trustees mentioned that they had a bit of lag going on. Okay, I'm going to say that this is passed unanimously. So we have a bit, bit easier path going forward to the regular board meeting. Thank you, Tanya, for motion, uh, motioning, making the motion, and Leanne.
Stop it, move to the next one, too. I've got it open.
That'll be perfect. Thank you, Tanya, if you could.
The Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District number sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, adopt the amended annual budget of the board for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, at the Board of Education meeting on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second or? Seconded by Tim. Tanya, motivation?
Again, staff have done excellent work. We've got a very clear sense of our, sense of our financial picture. This is a mandated activity that we have to do, so I'm, I'm happy to support it.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Thank you, Tanya. Anyone else have any thing before we call the question? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. If anyone opposes the motion that Tanya read out, please indicate it in the chat below. And if not, it will be passed unanimously. Let's give it one quick second. Okay, I'm going to say that passing out, say, thank you, Tanya, and thank you to Mark and Tanya for all that work and all the staff of the Finance Department, as a matter of fact. We have one more item. This is the last one of the evening. We are at the end, folks. 8.7. Three-year enrollment projections. Thank you, Mark.
Great. So thank you, Chair. And this evening, I think I get to be the bearer of good news with this last item. And that is our enrollment estimate for next year. And so I know that a number of districts have seen a little bit of a softening because of a movement out of province. So Alberta, as an example, has been quite a big dynamic in a number of districts. The other piece, of course, is that our cost of living has really impacted the birth rate of people that are, you know, born and raised in Nanaimo, as an example, are just having less children. So we are at a place where we are projecting an increase enrollment of over 200 students next year, which would be the basis of 236, which would be the basis of our budget. So that doesn't mean anything yet because we don't know what our, you know, what the funding is going to look like. So if the province changed the funding in a significant fashion, then all bets are off. But if we are going up by 230 kids, now a vast majority at secondary, so much of it's just going to come in and drive staffing. We're still, you know, look in a fortuitous position with respect to when we look to that budget. Obviously, we have inflation. Obviously, we have challenges that we don't know if we're going to get extra funding to be able to face. But additional kids is typically in the model that we're built for is typically good news from a budget perspective. You will note that our projections differ from what the ministry is suggesting, and you'll see the rationale for that. Very, very good hard work done by Tanya and team, working, getting Jackie and Dawn and principals to kind of confirm what they're seeing, to cohort kids throughout. So the, you know, the ministry model is not, we have 100 grade ones this year. The chance of us, you know, losing 10 of them is pretty low. So we're, we cohort them through to the best of our knowledge. And again, with the principal's eyes to understand if we know if anyone's going to be going. So it's a pretty good guess. We're very close this year. Our challenge is next year with this is going to be capacity driven. So our secondaries, Wellington, of course, is getting its expansion, but at earliest it would be second semester makes it available for our students. So, but really, this is an estimate at this point. But 236 is a really nice place to start your budgetary process. I would certainly not want to be starting at minus 236. So happy to answer any questions, but I would say good news on that front. And again, thank you, Ms. Sutton, for this work.
Thank you, Mark. It sounds like the ground game that staff and you have is working out. So thank you to that. We do have some questions. I see Chantel.
Thank you, through your chair, to Mark. And I think I raised this last time, too, but I'm even more curious this year because we know that throughout the year, we had Level 2 designated students increased by quite a substantial amount. And I'm sure that we have a large group of students who are still on waiting lists to get, you know, diagnoses and then subsequently designated. I'm just kind of, I'm wondering now, why we do this three-year forecast for the ministry is maybe not as defined and stuff. But I do wonder if, because I see that the, that we've actually sort of decreased the amount of students that would be designated Level 2 from what we have now this year for the subsequent years coming up. I wonder, though, like if this, like maybe if they go to the Ministry of Finance and they say, look, we're going to be having more students and stuff, would not, would it not be better to sort of at least go with the numbers that we have today and continue on with those? And that way, so we're not, we're not just going down, we're maybe flatlining or increasing by a few at least per year? Because I feel like we're sort of underestimating. And we all know that diagnoses are getting better and faster, hopefully, and designations more robust because we have more students as well. I'm just wondering what we can do here on this, on the FTEs for level.
Sure. So through your chair, so what I, first of all, I would say, looking at budget 26, 27, 27, 28, don't look at, it's, there's not a heck of a lot of use. It's useful from an enrollment perspective up and enrollment perspective down. Maybe I can ask Tanya to jump on and just talk a little bit about the process we take when we're making those determinations. I know we've been less conservative on that front in the last number of years. But Tanya, do you want to maybe comment on that process?
Yep, thank you, Mark, through the chair. Chantel, I will actually confirm for you that the students that are projected for the coming year are actually the students that remain in our system with us. The difference is the downside is just the cohorting out. So we're accounting for the exact number of students that we have that we will be providing service for in the coming year. Those that come into our system new, we, of course, have no idea what incoming Ks will look like. And there will, of course, be many students that will receive it as a designation prior to September. And they will be accounted for on our 1701 student data collection. So it's a, you know, I understand the rise and fall is difficult, but it's a financially risk mitigative way to say, we don't want to say that we're going to get more or not, you know, likely they will be there, but we'll also be serving those students. We'll get the funding and we'll provide student services out to those students directly.
Yeah, exactly. Because it is really like, these are just numbers that we give. And I would love to maybe one day ask the ministry, why are we doing the three-year projection? And trying to be accurate in something so hard to do. We're spending a lot of money already trying to forecast out. I just wonder that if, and we don't know that, I don't think this is an answer, a question you can answer, if whether or not it affects what their projections are when it comes to funding for the future, especially for students with designations, because that comes with added funding. Does it help them think about perhaps increasing the per-people funding for designations? You know, these are just sort of thoughts in my head about all of this stuff. And I do wonder if, yeah, there's a better way to do this from your perspective, from our perspective, and from the ministry's perspective as, yeah.
Well, what I will say about, at least with respect to general enrollment, is they do their own numbers from a kind of a just provincial basis to go to Treasury Board. And I'm just trying to envision what impact would there be if we had higher numbers? I'm not sure there would be. And in fact, I don't want to suggest that the ministry, I mean, there's a limited pot. So would that mean that they would be wary of actually providing additional funds? Because if they thought, oh, we've said we'll fund this, and if it goes, we fund more of that, then all of a sudden, we don't put money somewhere else? I would almost rather have them miss and then have to go back to Treasury Board for more and more funds be put in other envelopes theoretically.
That's a really good point. Thank you, both of you, for explaining that a bit further. And I really appreciate all the hard work on this. It's not easy to look into the future. There's no crystal ball. So I appreciate all the work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. Do we have any other questions for Tanya or Mark? I don't see any, and there's no motion attached. So have a good evening, everyone, Mark and Tanya. Thank you very much. We're going to move on now to item number nine on the agenda, which is correspondence referred from the regular board meeting, which we have none. Number 10, unfinished business. Again, we have none. Item 11, new business. We don't have any. Number 12 for information. I'm just going to share that this Saturday, we have five former Prime Ministers of Canada asking that all Canadians fly the Canadian flag. And if you don't have a Canadian flag, wear, wear maple leaf of some sort or wear red and white in solidarity. I'll leave it at that. I won't get any more further political than that. I think we all know what's going on south of the border. So this is a nonpartisan, this is former prime ministers from all parties that have been in power. So it's a nonpartisan thing. It's just supporting the fact that we as Canadians stand united during these times. So thank you. Number 13, our final, right, it was question period. Looks like we have no questions. So I'm going to entertain at this time, number 14, a motion to adjourn. I see Leanne moving to adjourn and Chantel seconding. Anyone opposed to adjourning, please put it in the chat. And if not, I'm going to wish each and every one of you a happy evening and have a great Thursday tomorrow. Good night. Motion adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you.